...to order, and we're going to ask Council Lady Sabrina Wooton to do the invocation.
Let us pray. For heavenly Father, we come before you humbly submitting ourselves. We look unto the hills, from whence cometh our help. Our help comes from you, Lord, the Lord who made heaven and earth. Lord, tonight, we pray, God, that through all of the chaos, the noise, and distractions, that you would give us the opportunity to hear your voice and a heart to receive what you are saying. Help us to know what the right thing is to do, and give us courage to stand and do what is right. I pray, Lord, that even when we don't know what to do, that we would ask you, who gives wisdom and guidance liberally. And tonight, Father, I pray for this meeting, that we commit it into your hands, for we need your wisdom and guidance to make the right decisions that impact so many people in this community. We pray most of all that your will will be done, and pray for each and every citizen for comfort and peace and protection. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Our flag is...
...the flag of the United States of America.
...and to the republic which is safe.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, everybody is present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to call for the certification of some recent closed sessions that we have. Could I get a motion to certify the closed session of June 3, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, okay.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've certified the closed session for June the 3, 2020, in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, and then I'm going to call for a motion to certify the closed session of June 4, 2020. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've certified the closed session of June 4, 2020, in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, I'm going to call for a motion for the closed session of June 13, 2020. May I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley? Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've certified the closed session of June 13, 2020, to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
Okay, and then I'm going to call for certification of the closed session for today, June 16. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion to recess.
And now I'm going to call for a motion to certify the informal and formal session of May 19, 2020. May I have a motion?
Second.
Is this, did you say the minutes?
Approving the minutes.
Approving the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor, Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the minutes as submitted.
Okay, prior to going to the consent agenda, I would want to remind everyone that the City Council speaker policy that allows certain representative of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. We have several items with only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify each item that has been registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to contact on each item. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have been signed up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil under discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you, and ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. At this point, Mr. Vice Mayor, can we have the consent agenda?
Did you want to call the speakers for the...
Oh, yeah, we have the speaker first. Yeah, my apologies.
So Ms. Messner has signed up on every planning item, and I understand the only planning item at this point to be heard separately will be seven.
Okay.
Is that correct?
So you want to do the...
Yeah, item seven is being...
I'll call, I'll call, I'll call the item when you're up there. I don't have an extra one.
There's some hot on the table, Ms. Messner.
Ms. Messner's the speaker. I can just call the item if you'd like.
Barbara, Barbara.
So the first item, Ms. Messner, is planning item one. Danny and Patricia Martin, Brian and Arlene Martin, and Robert and Natalie Phason.
Sorry, there, there was only a police officer out there when I got here.
Planning number one.
Okay, this is correct. Okay. But I need to, I wasn't able to take this off the last time. Am I allowed to take it off when I speak?
Yes.
Yes.
It's pretty hot in here. Okay, my issues are, on speaking, are due process. And this was printed, the ordinances were printed, and we can't speak on the ordinances. And I would, I would like an explanation why.
Could you stick to the planning item?
I am, I am. But it's important, since you're giving me this time. And I don't see any candidates, anybody else, signed up to speak. They're signed up for a conditional change of zoning from B2, Community Business District to Residential Resort District, demolish existing single-family dwelling, and construct three-story duplexes. My issues are with the uncontrolled growth. We have major problems with flooding, and with traffic, and with crime. And you've discussed this before. There's too much high density, and there aren't enough police officers in every neighborhood. And since this is my time, this is the Institute for Justice, and our government officials above the law, and they are, there are a lot of things, if somebody wants to look at the Institute for Justice, they're going all the way to the Supreme Court to protect citizens' rights, constitutional rights, especially free speech. Okay. Do you want me to speak on the next one, too?
Yes.
Okay.
The next item is I two, Spence Crossing, conditional change of zoning.
Right. Okay. Change of zoning from conditional B, mixed-use district, to conditional PDH2, Planned Unit Development. Reference, eliminate commercially-zoned property and construct 224 residential units. We have way too much high density. And all the problems at the oceanfront, a lot of those people are local. There aren't that many places for people to go. The playgrounds are closed, but the breweries and the ABC stores are open. I mean, we need to protect our residential areas and not keep having, and HUD money is used for these high-density projects. This is Centerville, which is Ms. Wooton and where Mr. Dyer lives. Okay?
The next item is Gold Pedal Farms LLC Wave Church for a conditional use permit.
Right. Okay. Wave Church is a mega church, and they have two locations. They do a lot of, you know, bus transport for, for them. And I, I'm opposed to all these mega churches. And this one is a conditional use permit for recreation and amusement facility of an outdoor nature. And this is in Ms. Henley's area, so I would like her input on that.
The next item is Jeffrey Franklin, Gregory, and Jeanne Simmons, and it is requested for withdrawal.
Correct. But even though it's been withdrawn, we can still speak. It's a commercial kennel. We're overrun. There's dogs everywhere. The dogs can go to the beach, but the children don't have a playground. I mean, I would like one or two days a week where I could go to the beach, and every dog in the entire region isn't at the oceanfront. We should have large parks, like New York Park. Anyway, yeah, I oppose the kennels. They're going up everywhere. I've spoken on these before. All right, and...
The next item is Stephanie Guthrie, Jack P. Guthrie, Jr., for a conditional use permit.
Right. Another kennel, Rose Hall, that's Mr. Berlucci's area. And he has shown concern about what's going on in neighborhoods. Kennels, that's a lot of dogs that have to be walked, a lot of barking, and a lot of people coming and going. So, like I said, I oppose it. And am I going to be able to speak on anything else, or just planning? Because I, I did challenge the fact that we can speak on planning, but the ordinances were, were published. And, you know, I, I think it's selective to pick, pick and choose what we can speak on. So is this all I'm going to be able to speak on is...
Only planning.
On planning, okay.
The next item you signed up for is number six, ordinance to adopt and incorporate the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan, the sea-level wise adaptation strategy.
Right. Sea level. I mean, we've been dealing with this since 2016, and flooding gets worse. You keep approving new projects. And we already voted on the budget and the amending. One, 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 two, 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 two plus three. And driving here, you know, Princess Anne Road is really hazardous, winding around. And I noticed in front of one of the pump stations, a lot of the pump stations have not, are not working, that one of those, part of the 11 million we spent for Asheville Park on the flooding, one of those Thompson pumps was there.
That's all the items?
I'm not finished.
Oh, I apologize.
I'm not finished. Yes. I have three minutes for each one.
And this is, this is the June 9 letter, and this is the May 13 letter regarding electronic
meetings. And I, I've been challenging these, and Ms. Barnes answers, but the city attorneys and the council members do not. Okay, this one's signed. Okay, I want to make sure it's visible. It's Robert M. Dyer, but it's not signed Robert M. Dyer. It's signed Bobby Dyer. That's not his official name. And like over here, this, this open letter to residents, this is just scribbled, eight people signed. And this is just initials. That's not, you know, I've worked for law firms before. This is not proper procedure. There's, and you did not copy, you copied to the Pilot New Journal and Guide. There were no copies to the Washington Times or Fox News.
Okay, your time is up, Ms. Messner. Thank you.
Okay. But I just want to take a second, because I have asked, you know, I do want to recognize the victim families.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I ask that y'all change the cover page to, to honor them.
That's, that's all the speakers on the consent items.
Okay, Mr. Vice Mayor, consent?
Mr. Mayor, move for approval on the consent agenda under ordinance and resolutions. Item one, resolution to support, in support of the city's 2020 project applications to Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Program. Item two, resolution to support the reorganization and merger of the Greater Peninsula Workforce Board and Hampton Roads Workforce Council, Ray, create a single local workforce development area. Three, ordinance to adopt the 2020 Housing Choice Voucher Five-Year Plan and Administrative Plan, and authorize the city manager to execute and submit the plans to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Item four, resolution to authorize the city to continue participation in the Department of Criminal Justice Service's Certified Crime Prevention Community Program. Item five, ordinance to authorize and direct the city manager to execute a police mutual aid agreement with the city and surrounding localities. Item six, resolution, resolution to amend the cost allocation agreement between the city, Chesapeake, Hampton, Newport News, Norfolk, Portsmouth, and the Transportation District Commission of Hampton Roads. Item seven, resolution to set aspirational goals in city contracts, Ray, participation at 13.3% for women-owned businesses and 11.9% for service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. Item eight, ordinance to direct the city manager to undertake a local certification of small businesses and amend City Code Section 2-224.1, Ray, definition of SWAM-certified small business. Item nine, ordinance is to add City Code Sections A 2-224.14, Ray, enacting a project goals program to review city construction contracts over $5 million to determine requirements for minority business subcontracting. Item B, Section 2-224.12 and 2-224.13, Ray, pursue a shelter bidding initiative wherein, under certain contract sizes, eligible bidders are restricted to small, women, and minority SWAM-certified small businesses. Item C, Section 2-224.15, Ray, enact and enhance subcontracting program to identify all proposed solicitations where subcontracting will be required. Item 11, ordinance to appoint three viewers for one-year terms beginning July 1, 2020, Ray, view each street or alley proposed to be closed. Item 12, ordinance is to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city property known as A Harbor Canal, located at the rear of 2309 Leeward Shore Drive, Ray, maintain an existing bulkhead and pier and construct and maintain a floating dock. Item B, North Kings Road, located adjacent to 2804 North Kings Road, Ray, maintain existing block wall. C, Atlantic Boulevard, located adjacent to 2613 Atlantic Avenue, regarding construct and maintain five concrete slab balconies. Item 13, ordinance to accept and appropriate A $98,000 from What Works Cities to FY 2019-2020 Economic Development Operating Budget regarding early childhood language development program. Item B, $633,145 to the FY 2019-2020 Housing and Neighborhood Preservation Operating Budget regarding support ongoing departmental mission in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Item 14, ordinance to transfer $475,000 from Tourism Investment Program Fund Reserve to FY 2019-2020 Convention and Visitor Bureau Operating Budget, Ray, payment of beach ambassador expenses.
I open a public hearing on planning.
Under planning, item one, Danny K. and Patricia S. Martin, Brian and Arlene Martin, and Robert and Natalie Phason, for a conditional change of zoning from B2 Community Business District to conditional R5R Residential Resort District regarding demolish existing single-family dwelling and construct three-story duplex at 3705 Surrey Road in the Bayside District. Item two, Spence Crossing Properties LLC, for a conditional change of zoning from conditional B4 Mixed-Use District to conditional PDH2 Planned Unit Development regarding eliminate commercially-zoned property and construct 224 residential units and modification of proffers at the southwest corner of Princess Anne Road and South Independence Boulevard in the Centerville District. Item C, Gold Pedal Farms LLC Wave Church, for a conditional use permit, Ray, recreation and amusement facility of an outdoor nature at 2655 Seaboard Road in the Princess Anne District. Item four, Jeffrey Franklin, Gregory, and Janine Simon, for a conditional use permit regarding a commercial kennel at 1825 Indian River Road in the Princess Anne District, noting that that is consent for withdrawal. Item five, Stephanie Guthrie, Jack P. Guthrie, Jr., for a conditional use permit regarding a residential kennel at 3541 Champlain Lane in the Rose Hall District. Item six, ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan the Virginia Beach Sea Level Wise Adaptation Strategy and amend Sections 1.1, 1.2, 2.2, and 2.3. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay. Yes, Mr. Moss?
This is just the item that I was going to sneak about earlier. It's the Spence Crossing. I'm still voting yes, but I said I had a kind of observations. I thought we'd get lost. You may recall, though, we rezoned this property that was commercial, had a hotel, was a part of this all planned. Obviously, they couldn't compete with a government-subsidized hotel, so they rezoned their property and went back to residential on 11.5 acres, to be exact, with the zoning, with the density of 12.52 units per acre. The balance of this property, which they're now rezoning, which is the other half, is 14.5 acres, which has a density of 15.44 units. So there is an increase in density of higher than the other parcel that we did, which is about 43 more units. You've got to be conscious of that. And, but more importantly, look at the trend that is taking place. What it's telling us, because we have some other rezonings where they're wanting to do mixed use, but the market is saying that, what we all know, is that retail and those kind of mixed uses saturated, and people want to get money out of their property. And the only way they can do that is residential. But that may be, in the long run, a short-term view on our part. And at some point in time, we need to take a look. And even though this is something permissible, we can do, would someone look back and say 20 years from now, or 15 years from now, that we made the right choice, increasing our amount, other than reducing our residential assessed value. It's increasing as a percentage, further than we were in 1986, when I was over at Kingston Elementary School. So we just need to be mindful of these choices of responding to short term that may not be in the best long-term solution. And make sure we understand, and I think the staff should bring this out in their analysis, but they don't, what the difference in density. We just need better analytical product before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. Anybody else?
I have, I have a comment.
Okay, if I could get...
Phil, who in, oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Wooton first, then Ms. Henley.
Okay, fine. Thank you. I just want to mention Spence Crossing Properties. You know, in connection and talking with the developer, it is true, they were not able to acquire the commercial partners for using the property for that specific purpose. So they did have to change, and they had to use that property more so for residential, a residential purpose. However, I can say that in visiting and going out and talking to people and residents who do stay there, there's a wide array of places, from apartments to homes. And, you know, we talk all the time about affordable housing and those opportunities. And I would say that Spence Crossing is a, a model for making sure that we have affordable housing available for our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Henley?
I can't tell who anybody is with a mask on, but is that CJ Bodnar in the back?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I think we really owe him a great thank you for this sea-level-wise document. And the last time I heard you, you had counted somewhere around 50-some presentations you had made of the year, in going out and talking to people and explaining what this document is, and with all the, and, and I'm saying, recognizing CJ, but I think that's Phil, but the whole engineering staff that's worked on this so hard, and Tom, for all this time, thank you. And we'll try to make sure it's not just a document that we adopt and then don't pay attention to. It's really going to be critical for our, our future. And thank you so much for all the work you've done on it.
Okay, thank you.
And all those long nights.
Yes, Ms. Wooton.
And I just want to support Councilwoman Wooton in her remarks, especially when, in regard to affordable housing. This is affordable homeownership. The price points on these units aren't such that the people that work for us, our firefighters, our teachers, the people who work in the banks, the people who get the job done for the people in our community every day, are going to be able to afford these properties. And they're well-built, they're, they're nice, they're attractive, and a good place for them to raise their families. So we, we do need places like this, and I think it's, it's a good thing.
Okay, great. Okay.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berlucci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, I go into item 10, under ordinances. It's an ordinance to amend the City Code 1-12.2, increase courthouse security fee imposed from persons convicted of criminal or traffic offenses requested by service, Sheriff Stolli. Any speakers?
No, no speakers allowed for ordinance.
Okay, Mr. Moss?
I pulled this for discussion, because I thought, once again, there was a posity, is probably polite, of data here. We don't know what the revenue of transactions at the courthouse generated in 2007. We don't have that. We don't know what the volume was last year for the transactions, and how much the $10 fee. This basically says that because the state law has changed and allows us to increase the fee, doesn't mandate it, we're doubling the fee. We don't have a good idea of who the people are who are going before the court, maybe among our, sometimes often our most economically disadvantaged people. So now we're putting additional burden on them. So there's no underlying and out, and what is the requirement? We just adopted a budget for the sheriff's office. I don't recall any significant deficit being attributed. So is this a case of revenue creating a requirement, or a requirement existed for which we do revenue? But I think we should be seeing the trend line of cases at the courthouse, the trend line of revenue. The cases could be growing in real terms, and revenue could be up 5%, 6% a year. It could be flat. But we're asking to double a fee just because a law allows it, but with no underlying foundation as to why it's required. And I really would like to think that we'd all be a bit more studious than that. And this may have a lot of merit, Mr. Mayor. I'm not saying it doesn't. I'm just saying, two pieces of paper for 100% increase in a fee, without even understanding who it impacts, and if there's even a need for it, is not the standard I think we want to set. I think this should be deferred, and that would be my motion, because, to give it opportunity. But this isn't the kind of homework that should be coming to us.
Okay, Mr. Rouse?
Well, not to sound redundant, but I would, I agree with every sentiment that Councilman Moss has just stated. Two pieces of paper on a fee increase simply because of the state said we can do it with absolutely no kind of justification or more information on it. Again, how does this impact our city? I don't understand what the revenues were in 2007, what they're going to be. Really, I can't, in no way, shape, or form vote for this without having more information. So if this council will to defer, I'll second the motion.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Mr. Warren. Dana, do you have something?
No, I just wanted to, so how long are you deferring? So I think we need to give the sheriff an opportunity to provide this data. So how long are you talking about?
I think it depends upon him. As soon as he's ready to bring it back, I'm ready to have it be on the, I think it's up to him to decide because he's the one who controls.
An indefinite deferral?
What?
Indefinite deferral.
Indefinite deferral, but at his discretion to bring it back. I mean, I'm not saying it, he can bring it back and next Tuesday, great. I just want to know.
Dana?
I just felt the need to address that this is limited by statute, so the last sentence of the legislation we provided that says this assessment shall be used solely for the funding of courthouse security personnel, and if requested by the sheriff, equipment, and other personal property used in connection with courthouse security.
I did see that, but the point is, we just adopted a budget just two months ago, no unfunded requirements or things were identified. And if he has, which is like, if he has all these things we don't have, and this is with the revenues, I understand the purpose, but the requirement has not been established.
Okay, Mr. Berluci.
Well, I agree with, I mean, I'm perfectly comfortable with the deferral, and I'll support the deferral. Just want to point out, our sheriff has well, you know, established himself as an extraordinary manager of the sheriff's office. And so let's give him the benefit of the doubt and hear what he has to say, and I'll look forward to him sharing that information with us.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is for indefinite deferral.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to 0, you have deferred this item indefinitely.
Jessica, I'm plugged in.
All right, moving on to item number 15, a resolution to adopt the Public Works Design Standards Manual as replacement for specification of standards manual for the Department of Public Works. Okay, Rosemary?
I would like to ask for number 15 and 16 for us to defer this. We've been hearing from the stakeholders, and only until we get our new city manager. And I thought that that was a reasonable request for the new city manager to come on. So I would just like to request a deferral until we get our new city manager.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, open for discussion. Mrs. Henley?
Well, I guess it has to have a second before we can discuss.
Yeah, we do have a second.
I, this has been out there for way over a year and has had so much discussion. We've just adopted our Sea Level Rise program. If we don't change the way we are designing things, we're not going to be able to accomplish what we have just said we want to accomplish. And I'm not sure the new city manager is going to have the background in design standards that our current acting city manager has with all the work that he has done. I just don't see a justification putting it off. I know that there were public hearings, I believe last August, with the development community. It's been out there for a long time, and we're actually approving plans all the time. And we need the new design standards, and I think it's pretty frustrating to think that, because I've been asking that we adopt this stuff for a year, and to get here at this point, I just don't know what, any more opportunity for stakeholders to hear it. I believe we do have somebody who wants to speak on it today as far as implementation on, and maybe signed up under the planning, I think. I believe we have a letter here. But I just don't see the justification for deferring this. We just adopted the plan. If we're going to have a plan, by golly, let's enforce it, and let's use it, and let's not continue to make the mistakes where we accepted developments that did not have the proper design standards to accommodate the kind of flooding and the kind of rainfall we're getting now. If we had had these design standards in place before Matthew, we would probably not have had the kind of damage that we had in some of the neighborhoods, particularly the more recently built ones. I'm not for waiting.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Moss?
Well, interesting, when I brought this topic up and wrote all the questions I had on the things that said they were the representative samples that would allow us to properly assess this document, I raised questions as to how representative they were, and how do you use public facilities to tell you about private development? I also raised the point, I think we didn't have an understanding, doesn't mean we still don't want to do it, and I'm not walking away from what Mrs. Henley's points, we'll come back to those, but I think the analysis that we did was very engineering-focused, and we don't have an understanding of what the impact is going to be, and as we adopt them, on the market ability and our ability to attract businesses and the cost of developing land in our community. And I think the standards are the right thing to get us to the flood protection that we need, and we don't need to be running away from that, and that, Mrs. Henley, is correct. I think there are some stakeholders in the community whose interest, and they understand better than our own staff, what the financial implications is for land development, and they're probably looking to have some of these standards relaxed. And we're going to be going back versus going forward. So I think we need to be mindful of that. The other thing I mentioned is lacking, we don't have any quality assurance plan. And then who are we going to go? We're going to go to a third party for quality control, much like people do in industry when they can't self-police themselves because they don't do a very good job. So then they have to contract out to a third party to do quality control and make sure they're doing the quality assurance. And I think we have a history that shows we're not very good at that, and to get the results. So I'm not in favor of deferral because I don't think the defects that might exist are so sufficient that we want to take on a different, additional development programs without requirements, without them placed, and further creating situations that they can prevent. But we have to send some kind of signal, I don't know if we have to get a weekly update or a bi-weekly update where they are, but where is the quality assurance plan? Show me how you're going out there. Once a quarter, come and show us all the BMPs you spec. What did you find? What did DOQ? What did you make them do? Because our past, that's how the ditches got filled at Princess Anne Plaza. Let's just be honest, they did, they filled up, and we're, and we're going down that same road. Lots of good policy, lots of good documents, but no realistic enforcement. And that's what I think. But I don't want to hold this hostage, Mr. Mayor, and with all due respect to Mr. Woods, I've heard from those same stakeholders, and I share some of their concerns. But the risk we take, when we say flooding is our number-one standard, is to hold up a big document for maybe 10% technical corrections. I would want the stakeholders to come through, much like they do with federal regulations. Let's come back, and if there's technical corrections, that the staff didn't properly adjudicate some of their concerns, have them bring them to us and see if those are concerns we want to do, and we'll give staff some direction. But I think flooding is too big a risk for our community to, I agree with Mrs. Henley, not to put it in place. But I do know that there are parts of these standards that need some technical correction, and we need a quality assurance plan. I don't know why we can't get one in 90 days, but that's what tells the public that these words mean something, is how we bring and make operational reality out of text. And this policy by itself doesn't do it. I'm going to, I'm going to vote against the motion because I do believe we need the plan. I think it has some flaws, but more importantly, the biggest flaw we can't fix tonight is we don't have a quality assurance plan that tells us how we're going to make these standards stick. That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll make a substitute motion that we approve the ordinances, 15 and 16.
I'll second it, Mrs. Henley.
Thank you.
Okay, wait, do we have it? Yes.
I have a question. I haven't had the benefit of having the chance to participate as fully as some of my colleagues have in the development of these guidelines, of these standards. And so I wonder if those who are requesting deferral would, if, share their perspective on whether or not they feel technical corrections could be made throughout the process, as was suggested by Councilmember Moss.
People that I've talked to haven't felt that way, and they would like for the new city manager to come on, and obviously, he's dealt a lot with flooding where he's coming from, so they.
Yeah, that was my understanding as well, and I.
I thought it was very.
Sorry, I just couldn't hear what the.
They thought it was very important for this new city manager to come on, especially for their industry, that we, they requested us to wait.
Because I think one could submit that the inversion of Councilmember Moss's argument is that this is such a serious issue that we should extend the courtesy of allowing our new city manager the opportunity to participate in formulating those policies because he's going to be, and he and his team are going to be such an important part of, you know, implementing them, that it seems to make sense to me, because it's such an important issue, that we allow the manager to review them before implementing them.
Can I respond?
Yeah. I think your logic about the inverse could be true. I think we have to ask ourselves, and all due deference to the person that we made our acting city manager, who's more knowledgeable about our flooding situation and control. And you have, you have to ask yourself, and I'm just, none of us are novice in politics, I don't think, but generally, once people says, let's get a new leader in to take a look at it, what it really means, I want a new opportunity to influence a different outcome than the one I already have. So if we believe, if the collective judgment of this body, that we believe that our current city manager and team have been unresponsive and have not given due diligence and adjudication to the industry's comments, then I'm in your camp. To be, if that's true, because if that's true, and what they want is, they're saying, hey, we don't think we got a fair shake, and we got concerns, we don't think that we're adequately addressed in these regulations, and now we want to approach a person who's fresh-faced, that means our delay is much longer, because if he's the person we say we believe he is, he's going to do a lot of homework before he, meanwhile, applications keep coming. And so we have to ask ourselves, given the volume of opportunities that we miss, why can't the new manager still hear those and bring us those technical corrections? I'm trying to understand the risk of the pipeline against delay, against what we say is our number-one priority, flooding. And while Mr. Leahy and I have had difference of opinion on a number of issues, and I ask a lot of questions, I do believe, as I look through there, I didn't see the flaws to be so substantial, and I've listened to the industry as well, that we can't fix some of those things, but we don't want to lose the goodness for the 10%. But I don't take exception to your thought process. I just think we also have to look as to what is the motivation of the people? Because I asked all of them to, some of my talk, won't say who I talk, to come down here and speak, but they prefer to not be in front of the cameras, they want to have the private conversations that we don't hear, and try to, and influence that's not in the public square. I don't think that's fair to the public, but it's how the system works. But I would not say, I think there's a motivation behind the delay, and it's not necessarily for the goodness of public policy, but that's an opinion.
Okay, can I get Mr. Jones, and then Mrs. Henley?
I guess I would ask the maker of the original motion, is there something specific in these ordinances that you can, that you would identify for me that you think is questionable or needs to be changed?
It's a general request because of the new manager coming in.
Because of what?
Of the new manager coming in, and a lot what Michael said. He's going to be the one implementing this. He does have a lot of expertise. I thought it was a reasonable request to defer it till he came on board.
And Mrs. Henley?
Well, had it not been for the COVID and our, all of these delays, we would have already addressed this a couple of months ago. I think it would have been all adopted in March. I believe that when we were supposed to have met requirements to adopt, what we just adopted with our plan, it should have been adopted in February, and these would have followed at that time as well. And some of you, I guess, have gotten called from some of the developers who wanted this delayed, but I haven't gotten a call from anybody, so this is news to me. No one has indicated to me, as a matter of fact, in sitting in Green Ribbon Committee meetings and other meetings during the last year, I've just heard a nod that they, you know, don't love greater restrictions, but they recognize it needs to be done. This is just news to me, and nobody's called me. So if, if once this new city manager gets here and finds that there are concerns that he has, he can certainly make recommendations at the time, but I would like to ask Tom if you would like to comment, since you've spent 40 years with us doing engineering, and I would like the benefit of your expertise.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Henley, Mayor, and members of council. The first thing, with respect to these proposed standards, they've been in the works for over two years, and if anyone in the building industry doesn't know that what they were about and why we were doing it and the basis for it, they must have just moved here in the last 30 days, because this is one of the areas that has been extremely vetted with the stakeholders. You will not, I don't think there'll ever be a condition when the building industry or the developer in development industry will like tougher standards. You may recall that about a decade ago, we tried to push through some standards that would have caused the, would have required that the elevation of homes and the curb line at the street be separated by at least a foot. We were unsuccessful in being able to implement that. A standard like that would have eliminated much of the flooding in Asheville Park. And in fact, after Matthew, many of the builders were actually doing exactly what we had tried to push through. They were now raising the finished floor elevation, so there was some elevation difference between the curb line and the structure, so when the streets did flood, it didn't mean that the house would flood immediately. Now, with respect to these new standards, they are making, they're concentrated in five areas. Three of them are just closing up loopholes between the, between our old standards and the DEQ and the state standards that allowed developers to do things and create the problems that were created in Asheville and Sherwood. One is that they are required to use a reasonable and a practical tailwater elevation, something that will actually occur during the storm that they're designing for. Another one is that they have to recognize the effects of groundwater. In many cases, there are assumptions made that the groundwater won't affect the level of the water in the receiving pond or the detention pond, and that's just not true. The third is that they would have to use our swim, our state-of-the-art PC swim models because the way they were using models before was allowing them, again, to take advantage of loopholes and produce designs that just simply weren't doing what they were supposed to do. Two of the areas were new, or really could be called new, and that is additional rain to recognize the fact that it is now raining more often and harder when we get these storms, and the other was to account for sea level rise, which we know is rising at about one inch every four years on the average. So I guess the question I would say is, if not now, when? Because the more we develop under the old standards, the more we're going to have to fix down the road.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else at this point? Okay, we have a substitute motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I just have a question. If this measure is delayed, will this new city manager still be able to make any type of adjustments, you know, after reviewing it? Or if we pass it tonight, that it is as it is?
I think technical corrections would be made either way, Mrs. Wooton.
Okay, so technical adjustments can be made.
The risk is, the developments that don't apply the standard that now create an issue for us to fix later at the broader taxpayer expense.
If I may.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I'm going to give you an example of what we're, of why I'm going to vote for this, for the substitute motion. Two, three years ago, I built a new building, pretty good-sized building, and. building. And it was just prior to and it was finished just prior to when Matthew hit us. During the course of the building of the building, the engineer had designed the building and the elevations of the building according to the standards that were in effect at that time and so forth. And he didn't do anything wrong. He just didn't think about what might come in the future. And so when I got out there on the site and I saw what was going on, I told him to raise the building another foot, which we did. We raised the building another foot. And and when Matthew came, the water went right up to the door, but it didn't go in the building. And that's what we're dealing with. That's exactly what we're dealing with. And that's why I'm gonna vote for these ordinances because I've experienced the issue and I know what's gonna happen if we don't pass these with these storms that we've got. We've got to deal with the issue. We can't continue to put it off. So.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a substitute motion on the floor. Okay?
Councilmember Abbott?
Motion is to approve it, correct?
The motion is the substitute motion is to approve.
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Nay.
Councilmember Wilson?
Nay.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Nay.
Mayor Dyer?
Nay.
By a vote of seven to four, the substitute motion to approve is carried.
And that was item 15, right?
That was item 15.
Uh.
So both, okay.
She was for 15 and 16, right, Ms. Henley? That was my understanding for the motion.
Okay.
Mark, do we need to do a separate motion?
So now I I would recommend that you actually now substituted the motion to approve for the motion to defer. I would ask that you now vote on whether or not to actually approve.
Okay, for item 15 and 16.
Yes, sir.
I move approval of items 15 and 16.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion at this point? Mr. Berluci?
I just want to take this chance to express since I had raised some concerns that I'd heard the feedback from my colleagues. And I think we have do have an opportunity with this with the manager to make some adjustments that would be agreeable to the industry and work together and collaborate. So that was a compelling case. And I just wanted to explain if it appeared to be a departure where that was coming from. So I'll I'll be voting for yes.
Okay. Any other? Okay, vote is open on item 15 and 16.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse? Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you've approved items 15 and 16, A through D. A through D, right? Yep.
Okay, I guess the final item for tonight is the ordinance to conform to the provision of the Public Works Design Standards Manual. Okay, do we, Mark, should we do each one individually or could we do all A, B, and C?
I think you can do all A, B, and C, but I think you have a speaker.
Yes, we do. The first speaker is Barbara Messner, and then the next speaker is Susan Fisher. Ms. Messner? Planning items, ma'am. This is items seven, A, B, and C. Public Works Design Standards Manual.
Okay, ordinances. You hop back and forth.
This is a planning item, number seven, A, B, and C.
I put all this stuff away because I thought it was over. And I'm the only speaker.
No, ma'am.
Well, okay, which one?
Seven, A, B, and C, planning.
Okay. Yeah, my issue is y'all play this game over and over ad nauseam. You know, Moss brings up all these good excuses why we shouldn't push something through and then everybody says, oh, we'll change it. You know, don't blame it on the COVID. Ms. Henley, that's ridiculous. I mean, there is no due process and I'm tired of it. Everything is, you know, super majority votes and that everybody says, no, let's wait. Even Ms. Wilson, who's running. How interesting that the new people that are running for mayor and all the other seats, you know, and no one, no one shows up. But yeah, no one's here discussing what all these things are. They're just numbers. You're not discussing anything except Ms. Henley saying, oh, we've discussed it for a year. I mean, you fixed nothing. You haven't fixed flooding. You haven't fixed crime. You haven't fixed traffic. You haven't fully funded the police. I mean, you're talking I mean, it's ridiculous what's going on. So, you know, like I said, you know, form based code, you keep amending it. That was put in in 2012. You know, I like I said, you're you're violating due process. And y'all all talk about the stockholders, the stakeholders. You don't talk about the residents. And and I resent it. I resent not being able to speak on the ordinances. How can you have a fair hearing, John Moss, and then change your mind when no one's here to discuss anything?
Any other speaker?
Yes, Susan Fisher.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Susan Fisher, President of Princess Borough Development Company. The three principles of this corporation are Susan Kellum, Suzanne Parker, and myself. We're the widows of the men, David Kellum, Ray Parker, and Mike Fisher, who began and constructed Sandbridge Marketplace on Fisher Arch, which connects Princess Anne and Sandbridge Roads. This is a small development originally consisting of 10 parcels. Four of these parcels remain available for sale. Our husbands began the rezoning and approval process in 2008 and ground was broken in March of 2012. Between those years, engineering studies were done, fully engineered plans were submitted and reviewed by the city. Additional studies were requested by the city and done at our cost, and plans were revised and resubmitted. Ultimately, the fully engineered construction plans for the entire development, along with the subdivision plat, were approved by the City of Virginia Beach. These approved plans included all stormwater calculations, collection, and infrastructure to handle the full build out of these 10 parcels. All public infrastructure, including public streets, sidewalks, facilities for the capture, transmission, and storage of stormwater, and a regional stormwater BMP for our multi-parcels Sandbridge Marketplace Commercial Center were engineered, designed, approved by the City of Virginia Beach. Bonds for their completion in accordance with the approved plans were posted with the city. All improvements were constructed, installed, inspected, approved, and accepted by the city. All the bonds were released by the city. Four parcels were sold and developed, zoned, invested, upon which all the land, with the exception of required setbacks, was developable until two to three years ago. Using the proposed ordinances which you're voting on tonight, your Development Services Center and Public Works Department began refusing to approve any site development plans submitted by contract buyers of our parcels unless submitted site plans included substantial additional onsite stormwater retention facilities, which added hundreds of thousands of dollars in cost to the buyer's development and effectively reduced the amount of land on each parcel upon which a building and parking could be constructed. We saw our market values plummet by approximately 40% from $350,000 to $213,000 an acre. While I understand the city's desire to revise codes as a means of addressing stormwater issues in Virginia Beach, I maintain that commitments made with property owners in previous years need to be grandfathered and honored. Our husbands in good faith incurred over $6 million in debt to complete the development to the specifications the city approved for Sandbridge Marketplace. I appear before you tonight to request that you do as our husbands did, honor your legal commitments. I ask you to acknowledge or direct your city manager to acknowledge that our remaining four parcels were legally grandfathered and allow us to sell them as they were designed, approved, and developed in accordance with the subdivision's approved master plan, public stormwater drainage system. Changing the rules is just not right.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion on this one?
Perhaps someone address this, Mr. Bulen or?
Hey, Bobby.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the subdivision in question is what's on Fisher Arch. It's an area of known flooding. I don't believe we have that on since we weren't anticipating having that. So because it's an area of known flooding and it was designed under the previous design standards that they had in place before we had done the tailwater elevations and understood the impacts that we've had, it was approved. However, now that we have better data and we know that there is going to be flooding on the sites due to the design, the Development Services Center has it's in planning has been requiring that they that they make sure that they do an analysis currently downstream to assure they're not causing any additional flooding. That's important because the since we know and we have better data at this point, there is a concern that we as we continue to approve construction plans, although there is a general construction permit or a general plan that a subdivision construction plan that was approved, we do know that there will be flooding based on those calculations. So we are either requiring them to provide a downstream analysis to assure that they are not making it making the situation any worse than it was before or as you've seen with some other approvals that have come in, if they get a discretionary approval from council, they are they have been required to meet the new standard, which is the increased rainfall and the sea level rise calculations. So I believe the last one you heard was maybe six months ago for was it the storage unit, I believe, with the Byright Commercial Office Building that was in the front. They were required to meet the higher standards for that development site because it was a discretionary approval. So.
That was that warehouse?
Yes.
Yeah.
The warehouse.
Okay, Mr. Moss?
Before we get back, I always when people use the word commitment, I'm always trying to understand what the legal obligation and what the civic obligation, they're always not the same. So I'm trying to go back, maybe you can help me is people can because this I think went on with another development, people can have a land and a parcel. They could have submitted some site plans for part of it. But until they have set the site plan and actually got a site plan approved, they don't really get the vested of the standards that exist. The zoning itself doesn't convey the standards. It's the having a site plan submitted. That's when you get the vested of the whatever standards existed at the time your site plan was approved is what applies. Is that correct?
So that is what we're yes, that is what we're doing here. They they were approved as and and Ms. Fisher's correct, they were approved with a certain impervious cover that was allowed per lot. They that does not give them a blanket to just build on the sites. They do have to submit plans. And once they submit those engineered plans, our staff is obligated to let them know that they will cause downstream flooding and impact other properties. And so that's where this additional analysis comes in.
Right. I'm just trying to understand the process, the intake. So I've listened very carefully what she had to say. So she there, they believe when her conversation that they had this parcel zone, they had a site plan with some they had some of the parcels were developed. These parcels were not these four parcels. They came to have these four parcels additional something done to these parcels. And they're saying, oh, we believe the standards that existed at the time that we did the prior approval that they received. So I'm trying to get to what their legal obligations are. That's what I'm trying to understand. Now they come into the door and they say, oh, we now want to get our construction design. I'm not probably using the right terms. And you're saying, oh, wait a minute, you've got these additional things that you're going to have to do on this property that you if you had developed this two years ago, you wouldn't have had to do. I'm just trying to understand what truly for the property was vested and what part of where they were in the process made them subject to the new standards because they really weren't grandfathered. They really didn't have a commitment to some legacy standard. And I'm trying to understand that timeline, if you can educate, please.
So my understanding and I may have to defer to Carrie Bookhold, the Development Services Administrator on some of this information. Yes, you're correct. It was approved with a with a subdivision construction plan that does say you're allowed to have this much hard surface on the property. They did not get a construction plan for each specific lot. And they are not being held to the higher standard of the increased rainfall and the sea level rise. We just know now that there is impacts downstream, which can cause flooding because of the current design. So what we've been requiring them to do for any subsequent plans that have come in, if they have not gotten a discretionary approval, which puts them in the higher standards, we have told them, we are aware of flooding conditions. It is an existing area of flooding. You must address the flooding conditions.
So this is the state standard that exists, right?
I I will have to defer.
I know it's a state standard that applies. And then there's ours, which is which are have a little bit more than the state. I'm just trying to understand what standard they're having to meet and are they really having to meet something new?
Right. I'm Carrie Bookhold. I'm the Development Services Administrator. We we whenever we have a project like this that comes along that we know is in an area of known flooding, we consider the site can still grandfather for water quality. So we aren't making them meet the new state standards for water quality and phosphorus removal, but we are requiring them to show us a downstream analysis. And if they can do so, if they can say, here's my project, here's the new information, the new tailwater, if we plug it in and it works, we'll approve it. But based on our experience for projects in that area, it they can't show us that the the site will work as it's currently designed. So it often requires additional attenuation of stormwater on site.
So you're really applying the legacy standards with improved analytics. Is that correct?
Right. So we're part portion of the project is still considered grandfathered as far as water quality standards, but water quantity, since we know and with our, you know, professional ethics, we can't allow a project to continue to be developed without meeting the water quality standard.
Well, I've never asked you to do that. I'm just trying to understand. So I understand now it's we haven't changed the standards, but our analytics allow us to better understand the downstream effect and they have to compensate for that.
Correct.
Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your staff.
I think that's probably two different questions and that's another issue than what we're doing here. Actually, in this particular section, we're simply changing the wording to re previously, it simply said that it would they would be standards in accordance with the Public Works and with existing specifications of the Department of Public Works. We're simply changing it just to make reference now to in accordance with the Public Works Design Standards Manual. So it's just that wording changing throughout. So this isn't the actual action itself. It's just saying we're going to be using a different document and conforming that to what we we have already done. But this issue of that particular development and and how it was designed, as it's now coming in to develop and it's got a specific use and a specific design, then what was previously done may not be enough. And it's just doing additional work that has to be done to keep it from flooding. Is that correct? So it's so once now that we know and we have this data and we know it floods, then we we certainly have to apply it.
That is correct.
Okay, just so I'm understanding right. So that is not really what this this addresses. And so I'll I'll move approval.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, we can call.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you've approved planning items seven, A, B, and C.
Okay, there being no appointments, but I do have an issue under unfinished business. I'm handing the gavel to the Vice Mayor. Last week, we had an application come up among with the short term rental situations. We had a couple. We had a couple applicants that were in the room, that were able to come before council and, you know, just, you know, talk about their situation and, you know, help mediate their situation. We did have an applicant, the Swangos, that both the, Mr. Swango and the daughter made attempts, you know, to call in but were unsuccessful. And my thought is, just in, in interest of fairness, since they were unable to communicate, I am petitioning that, you know, for reconsideration, that at least at this point, we reschedule them, and at least give them the opportunity to have that fair hearing, you know, that we afforded the other people, you know, going forward. Hey, listen, I know short-term rentals is a tough emotional button for all of us, but my, you know, my plea is that in interest of fairness, you know, and, yeah, for consulting with the city attorney and planning director, you know, just to give, you know, give them the opportunity to, you know, to voice.
Is that a motion?
A motion.
To reconsider. Mr. Stiles, does a second have to be from the prevailing party as well? No, actually, your, your ordinance doesn't require a second, I thought it did, but I've looked at it, and it doesn't, it just requires a majority vote, so it's a motion to reconsider, and then a... There's a motion. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Moss.
I support it, but I would just like, since, I always think there's lessons to be learned, so now if we know this isn't an outcome that we want to have in the future, I would just ask that the city attorney or someone adopt the policy that we would vote on, so that we have a standard, so whenever that type of incident ever happens, because we want to treat everybody who comes before us the same, that we have a standing policy, you know, that you get one give me, if you're not here, no one's here, you get deferred, you miss the second one, we can act and deny, without you being present, and you're done. But I think we should walk away with this with a consistent policy, and we just codify it, so we know what it is.
Hey, anybody else?
May I clarify, these people were turned down because they were not here, is that the reason they were not, they were not heard?
My petition is the fact that they both made attempts to call in and were unable to connect with us.
We didn't get to hear from them.
We didn't get to hear from them, they did make attempts.
Okay, all right. Maybe that's a, a signal that we shouldn't try to have people do it virtually, since we now seem to be able to use the system here.
Yeah, boy.
Okay, I just wanted to understand.
Any other comments?
So we have actually advertised for virtual meetings up until July now, just, so you're aware.
I can come back, one of the things, since I think it relates to this policy adoption, well, it's all open media debut, but I did say, I think the time for our policy of not commenting on the ordinance and stuff is over, and we need to have on the agenda next week, I'm gonna ask the city attorney, that we rescind that, and that we let people speak on all parts of our agenda, and we need to, you know, the, the COVID excuse for legitimate stifling of people's participation, I think, is past us, and people need to come down here and be able to speak on all parts of our agenda. Open mic should be back, and the way we govern should be restored, and I think it's time for that to happen, and I'm gonna ask the city attorney to craft that and put that in our packet and add it to the agenda for next Tuesday, and we can discuss the effective date, but this, this style of operation needs to end.
Is that already voted right now? Not yet. Any other comments? Okay, call for the vote.
Sure. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Berluci?
Aye.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
11 to zero.
And I thank the council. Any new business? Thank you all, we are adjourned.